Ten seconds.
I'd like to call tonight's municipal planning board meeting to order. Anna, please call the roll.
Bonnie McNair.
Here.
Chris Horton.
Here.
David Witham.
Here.
Jason Berry.
Here.
Jeff Witazinski.
Here.
Jeremy Rhodes.
Here.
John Splain.
Here.
Mark Richardson.
Here.
Ron LaHulier.
Here.
This time I'd like to appoint Mr. Splain as a full voting member for the evening. Even if you are an alternate, you can ask questions during the public hearing portion of the meeting. First item approval in minutes of the meeting of October 15, 2025. Does anybody have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Richardson. Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Epstein. Next is committee report, city council report. Mr. Witham.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I just think, an item that I think is really pretty exciting to share, as I think you know from prior reports, the city is moving forward with some rather substantial upgrades to the water treatment plant on Wells Street, a little bit north of $7 million, just to improve the infrastructure there. We have plenty of capacity and water quality is very good. This effort is just to maintain that, right, and upgrade the equipment in the actual physical building and all of that. The other item of interest with regard to water is we have at least preliminarily as council made a decision at the recommendation of city staff to move forward with water main replacement on Main Street from roughly John Parsons Drive to Indigo Hill Road. That section of Main Street is sort of earmarked for a complete streets project. It's still in engineering with Wright Pierce engineers. And the council, at least initially, was thinking about to make this project palatable from a financial perspective was to do it in segments over a number of years. We've rethought that strategy because we were able to apply for both the water treatment plant and this water main replacement for state revolving loan funds to fund that project. But the real benefit of those funding strategies is a loan forgiveness, which would be north, if we combine the two, north of $3 million. So it's real savings for our rate payers at the end of the day. So the plan is for Main Street, instead of working on that complete streets project in segments along the way, is to work on it in segments from the ground up. So we'll replace the water main and then in the coming year or two, maybe focus on drainage and sanitary sewer and kind of work to the surface from there. So just a different approach. So we're able to leverage these funds and importantly, the loan forgiveness. So just really pretty exciting with regard to that. The last item I'll report on with regard to water, which I think is just interesting because all of this infrastructure supports development that we are looking for in the community and are seeing in the community. As I think everybody knows, we have been in the CIP and moving forward with engineering for replacement of the standpipe up at the Noble Pines. And that work will continue. But we've recently discovered that the standpipe on Rocky Hill Road has infrastructure installed, piping in the ground to support an additional standpipe at that location, which would just increase capacity and pressures and all of those sorts of things, which is really exciting for the future of the community in terms of our ability to provide potable water through the community, to the community. So we are exploring what that would look like to build another standpipe there and whether or not that would go first before the one at the pines so that we maintain capacity. Those are all still some balls that are up in the air, but it's really a pretty exciting opportunity for the community. And again, applaud to city staff for identifying that, recognizing it. It's really pretty exciting. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Sheriff, the regional planning commission update. Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Since the last meeting, the Gasset hearings were held in Durham and Dover and Farmington, I believe. I did attend the one in Dover. As you know, the Route 108 project, there is money available for the right-of-way and the engineering part, portion of that project. But the project itself, it hasn't been canceled, but it's pushed out of the 10-year, 10-year plan because of lack of funding statewide for all the projects that are out there being proposed and even that one that's been on the 10-year plan. People made their comments and there were several people who spoke in favor of all kinds of different things, but Route 108 was the big one. And certainly I pitched it as best I could. I pointed out that we have had significant development along Route 108, so it's coming along just nicely on its own. But we have not done any exactions for safety measures of sidewalks and crosswalks and lighting and turning lanes or any of that because of the, you know, the hope that the Route 108 project was going to take care of all of that. And I would hope that Route 108 continues to develop, but it needs that, it needs that road to be done. I suggested that, you know, because of the high cost of where they were originally planning to do the project from the Dover end, but with that concrete road, maybe they start at the Rochester end and come south. And that'll give them some time because it is a phased project and that'd give them some time to find the funding to pay for the big deal at the end with the concrete road removal underneath the current roadway. So I have a feeling that I was heard. I have a feeling that other people were heard. What the results of all that are going to be, we'll, we have to wait and see.
Thank you. Twenty thirty committee update. Mr. Berry.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Housing committee, Mr. McNair.
Oh, I thought you said Ms. McGann and you're looking right at me. I was not at the last housing committee meeting. Oh, no, it got canceled. That's what it was. There's no report. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next, we go into old business. Is there any old business to come before the board, Director Mears?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to go into new business. Item 4A, Roger Tarian is seeking a site plan amendment to allow shipping containers on a property located at 371 Route 108 in the Commercial Industrial CI District. Assesses map 48, lot 20, site number 162025. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is seeking a site plan approval to allow for the use of three shipping containers as permanent storage on the site. He did provide the site plan from 2014. It is showing the shipping containers in the setbacks, but as a condition of approval, they would have to be relocated outside of the setbacks. The applicant did go before the site review technical committee at the October 29 meeting. As you know, the property is located in the Commercial Industrial District. Table of uses for A3 accessory uses, storage boxes or space trailers for non-hazardous materials by the commercial industrial use that occupies the property. They're only permitted on a temporary basis of, for up to one year. So that's the reason why this application is before us because these have been at the site for longer than a year. And this is ready for the board to review tonight.
Okay, is the application ready for acceptance?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Entertaining motion to accept the application?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Witham.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Berry. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? This time I'd like to invite Mr. Tarian to make a presentation. If you want to speak into the microphone, state your name and address or your affiliation.
My name is Roger Tarian, lawyer of the Free Society of State.
Got it?
Thank you.
He's a man of many skills. So, did everybody hear that? You want me to repeat it?
I think we're good.
Okay. So I'm just looking for your approval.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would, oh, sorry.
I'll open the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
Anybody care to comment on this application? Director Mears, is there any correspondence concerning this application?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn the questions to Mr. Witham.
I would just make a motion that the project has no potential for regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Supposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Witham.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I know that we've wrangled with shipping containers at other properties around the community. I, for one, kind of view them similarly to how we address refuse dumpsters here in the community where we want them on a solid surface, either concrete pad or paved surface. And we also want them screened. And I know that I have articulated that strategy with shipping containers. Most recently, the industrial condo facility in the old AT&amp;T building on Tri-City Road, they had an array of shipping containers that they were proposing there. And they proposed screening them with arborvitae fencing and they were going to be on a hard surface. So I think the board did approve that with that strategy. So I would be okay with that, with this strategy here. I do note that Mr. Tarian in the application material did note that they're sort of tucked into the tree line to sort of screen them. But if they're pulled out to be outside of the setback, I think they'll be very visible. So I think there's going to need to be sort of intentional effort with some screening, either fencing or arborvitae's combination thereof and a paved surface or something underneath of them. If that's satisfied, then I'm good with this. But one board member.
Mr. Berry.
Yeah, I was thinking the same exact thing as councillor Witham. You know, it makes sense, you know. Unfortunately, shipping containers have been the hot topic of this year. You're the, what is it, the third, third applicant, fourth applicant? And we've been very hard. Your neighbor, Patriot Tractor, we denied them, you know, for the same exact reason. They've been there. But we didn't give them the option of screening, right? So I'm very much open to the solution that councillor Witham has proposed. But I would like to see the same, the same solution be offered to the sites that we have denied to give them the opportunity to do the same thing, right? I'll vote if that is the course. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you maybe just kind of explain to us how you use them and kind of if there's still that big need? And I guess, could you kind of just talk to why using a shipping container rather than say an outdoor shed or something to that effect?
The shipping containers are more convenient. We're putting used parts in there and basically that's it. Parts from the cars that we have left over and just to put them. No room inside the shop. At some point, we would like to put on an additional, a separate building. We're not quite ready to do that yet, though.
Thank you.
And the other thing, too, as far as the setback is concerned, I don't have a problem moving them. It's just that I, I don't know how far back, we haven't had it surveyed. And I don't believe that I'm that far away from the setback. I'm not positive.
So just to continue on, I would also be in favor of allowing the conics boxes as far as they are, you know, screened properly and
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, and have a proper pad for the storage of them. So I'm good.
Any other questions?
Can I have a question?
Mr. Witazinski, then Mr. Richardson, then Mr. Witham.
So currently, they are, currently they're allowed temporary, they're allowed temporary for one year? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct. That's what's in our zoning ordinance.
Do you ever give an extension of one year at a time?
There, there has been one application that has come before us that got longer than one year at a time. That got a site plan amendment. I think it was for 10 storage shipping containers. Other than that, there hasn't been that many that have come before the planning board. There has been two others that have gotten denied for this request.
Will this open up a run on shipping containers?
There's a number of properties within the Commercial Industrial District that have shipping containers that have been there for longer than a year that are not in compliance with our zoning regulations. So they have been asked to come into compliance. So there's probably going to be more applications before the planning board unless the regulations change.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, Mr. Witham, then Mr. McNair.
Yes, I was one of the ones who voted no on the last ones and I'm going to vote no on this one, too. People ask for waivers and this, all the time. And when it becomes a regular thing, then I think we need to pay attention to the regulations and see whether they need to be revised and do that first before we start giving, you know, permission to put these in there. At least that gives people guidelines. They know what to do to screen them or keep them out of sight and from, from view of the, of the roadways and neighbors and all of that. I'd rather see that step come first before I vote yes for any of these.
Thank you, Mr. Witham.
Thank you. Just commentary about the property as a whole. It is an auto body shop. It's a sizable one. I don't know how many people are employed there, but a number of them. And I will say that as a property that is there to fix and maintain cars that have been involved in motor vehicle crashes, this site is exceptionally neat. There are not used parts lying around there undercover. I appreciate that the business is doing so well that there isn't space inside to store these. I'm excited about the future opportunity of another building, maybe more than you are. But the site is, is very well maintained and I, I think that is the intent of use of the containers as they exist right now is to maintain that, I'll use the term curb appeal that, that you have there. So the fact that we can maybe continue to allow these and enhance it with some additional features, I can support in this particular instance. With regard to the setback, just looking at the plan that I've been provided, the three shipping containers have been outlined in red here. It looks like the front edge of the shipping container is the edge of the setback line in almost every case. So they have to be pulled forward almost their entire length if I look at the, the map that I have here.
Really?
Yeah. But again, subject to code and surveying and all of those sorts of things, I suppose, but.
Ms. McNair.
Yeah, so in terms of this being probably what the third or fourth shipping container request since I've been on this board for a very short time, I would say that if this is coming up on such a regular basis, with respect to Mr. Richardson's concerns, yes, we should be looking at the regs, but also should we halt this progress because we have to review our own regulations. I think making this city a reasonable place to do business and to keep business open is not going to, is not a bad idea. Obviously, I'm, I'm always concerned for the business side of things in my, in my role here where I work, but also as a citizen. I know that where business thrives, so do towns and cities. So I think in, really in the spirit of, yes, we should look at those regulations if they're, if they're problematic, but also with something like proper screening with, with those, if we're able to make those accommodations, still make it visually acceptable, which is what really we're all against, having things look bad. If we can, if we can do that and still meet the needs of our business owners, I don't see why we shouldn't. That's all.
Mr. Rhodes.
Echoing a lot of the concerns that Mr. Richardson had here, and I was one of the no votes, the one shipping container exemption that was approved in the, I believe this is four or possibly five that have come up in front of us. I do intend to vote no on this as well. And the reason for that is the same as the previous one. Use, continuous use of shipping containers is a permanent solution using a temporary means. What we're looking at here, what was approved in the prior one, what I'm sure will be coming back to us with every other one that we've denied in the past, will be a request with an indefinite end time to use a shipping container for a permanent storage purpose. If we permit shipping containers to be used for permanent storage, there is no incentive to put up a permanent structure to serve the same purpose. We are going to see a proliferation of shipping containers being used as storage facilities, which is not what they're intended to do, does not fit with a community that looks welcoming and frankly encourages cheap practices. I've driven by Mr. Tarian's site on a number of occasions. It's not a problem from the street. My concern is that if we allow it based on a gut feeling that one applicant will continue to do well, we are going to see cases where it meets the letter, but it's not being well taken care of. And if we're going to change zoning laws on an exception basis here, we're covering up a problem that needs to be addressed elsewhere. That's not our purpose as a board. It's not what we should be doing. I intend to vote no on this, not because of the circumstances of Mr. Tarian's business, but because of the precedent it creates for others who will not operate as cleanly. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Seeing none, I'll ask Director Mears to summarize the conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For site plan application revisions, additional landscaping shall be added to the site along the frontage of the property to provide screening acceptable to the Director of Planning and Community Development. Shipping containers shall be relocated to comply with the setbacks of the Commercial Industrial District. This was added based on councillor Witham's comment. Pay, the shipping containers shall be located on paved surfaces. Conditions applicable during and after construction. A copy of a completed stormwater inspection maintenance log shall be provided to the Department of Development Services annually on or before July 1. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval and noted on the final plans. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced in a timely manner as long as the site plan remains valid. Placards shall be installed on the exterior of the shipping containers with the information of what is stored inside the shipping containers and all parking shall be located on paved areas within the site. That's for the vehicles on site.
All set? Thank you.
A clarification, if I may add.
Mr. Witham.
Either paved surface or concrete pad. So either or.
Entertaining site plan motion. Mr. Witham.
I'd move at the request of Roger Tarian for a site plan amendment to allow shipping containers on our property located at 371 Route 108 be approved with the conditions as outlined by Director Mears this evening.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Ms. McNair. Any discussion? Mr. Berry.
Okay.
And Mr. Horton.
So we've spoken about screening. Can we define what the screening is? To what extent? Is it, is it full encasement screening? Is it shrubbery? Is it fence? Well, can somebody please elaborate what that might be?
Yes, thank you. It would be a combination of both, depending on the height of the shipping container. So it would be an evergreen type of screening, screening similar to what we had at 100 Tri-City Road. And then a fence if, if that's what the board prefers, especially towards the Route 108 side where it's visible.
Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm just, I'm going to vote yes for this, you know, provided that we, that the applicant provides appropriate screening and meets requirements. In the list of conditions, does it give an additional time limit or there's no time limit? So?
We did not put a time limit on that, but I think that might be a good recommendation.
Thank you. Because I think, you know, Mr. Rhodes does bring up some pretty valid points and offers there a lot to think about. So I'm going to vote yes for this. I would look for other board members' opinions on, you know, should we provide a five-year time limit to this approval to prevent, you know, these temporary units being used as a permanent storage solution? So that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Thanks.
Ms. McNair.
Yeah, to, I actually, I really agree with Mr. Rhodes' concerns for the time limit and in the slippery slope we may be embarking upon by approving one of these requests where we've had so many in the past. But there again, where that appears to be the need and the preference, I tend to lean towards it. I do like the idea of a time limit so that they must come before us again and say, yes, I still have this. We talked about potentially a building, why I have or have not moved forward in that plan. I think it should be conditional. And I think it should be something we consider because it isn't a long-term solution, but it is a solution that we should be supporting to help these businesses continue to thrive here.
Mr. Witham, would you consider a time limit with your motion?
I'll, I'll go with the five years. I think that seems reasonable. My, I guess my question, though, is for Director Mears, is how do we track, manage that? What, what would that look like administratively?
I think a two-year timeframe would be better from the staff's perspective to keep track of that. And then at that point, work with the applicant. He could come back to the board and we could reassess the situation.
I'd be fine with adding that in if that helps to move this along.
Mr. Rhodes.
My main concern here is these becoming a state of perpetuity on any property that they're installed on. I recall the one we applied on, approved on Tri-City Road did not have any such time limit. With a two-year time limit, the conditions of screening placement on paved surfaces, I would be willing to vote yes for this.
For that, are you willing to go with the time limit on your second?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
Mr. Berry and Mr. Witham.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with the two-year time limit. But I would strongly suggest that we do get the, into our agenda to get the team together to work on those regs. To, to Director Mears' point, this is the fourth or fifth one this year, right? They're, they're not going away. And to be frank, I don't think it's fair to penalize applicants that are coming before we have that figured out. So unfortunately, we will have to do it on a per unit basis, okay? So I would say next meeting, let's get it into the, into the minutes, please.
Mr. Witham.
I'll jump on Mr. Berry's coattails. I agree. Let's, you know, I think we can use 100 Tri-City Road, potentially now, Mr. Tarian here this evening as an example of sort of the type of language we might find ourselves weaving into our zoning ordinance with regard to these structures, you know, paved or concrete surface, screening either with vegetation fence or a combination thereof, and begin to massage it at this level before we move it to council for full, for full action. So I support that idea. One last thing with regard to the conditions of approval under the site, under the plan revisions, additional landscaping and/or fencing. So I think it's perhaps a combination of both. We've talked about fencing, but it's, it's not memorialized in here. So I want to just make sure we get it in there. If you're okay with that second.
You can go with that, Ms. McNair.
Yes, yeah, it makes perfect sense. Yes, yeah, it makes perfect sense.
Any further comments? Poses and favorities, your right hand? Pose. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And you can get together with city staff in the coming days and they can guide you on next steps.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. mixed-use development on a property located at 404 High Street in the residential commercial RC District. Assesses map 37 Lot 07, Site Number 17-2025. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is proposing to construct a new four-story mixed-use building in which the commercial space on the first floor will face High Street, and a mix of one-bedroom studio and two-bedroom apartments will be located to the rear and on the upper floors facing the existing residential areas. This proposal is for 172 apartments with a percentage to be workforce housing. The applicant is seeking feedback on the overall development proposal and conceptual architecture on the site, and anything else that the planning board would like to see, such as traffic or landscaping. I'm sure that's going to be a big discussion tonight. This property is located in the residential commercial district. It's about a 7.38 acre parcel with 671 feet of frontage along High Street and historically has been used as a place of worship and related religious facilities. It's church. Multifamily dwelling units do require a special exception to go before the zoning board, and a variance would also be required for this density. This is very conceptual and these comments are non-binding, so feel free to discuss the application with the applicant.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Argos Development, make their presentation.
Yes, my name is Jake Wagner. I'm representing Argos Development Company, 100 Conifer Hill Drive, Danvers, Mass. Sorry about that. Just, I think it's imperative that we talk about our initial contemplation on this site and how we ended up with where we are today. Our initial thoughts on the site was strictly commercial. We were going to do a plaza spearheaded by our anchor tenant, grocer, with some retail, restaurants, et cetera. Obviously, a lot of parking, wraparound drop-offs for deliveries that would go towards the back of the complex. Taking into account some of the, you know, mass amounts of commercial real estate that you have there, we've kind of tweaked our idea and pivoted. We've read the master plan that you guys have for residential, the necessity for it, and we've decided to turn towards the residential mixed-use. You know, with the necessity of residential and the lower levels being commercial, we have potential for a restaurant, bistro with some outside patio. We were talking about mixed-use space, offices shared for not only the tenants but the residents of Summersworth, and a spa and/or gym for that. We think it's a, you know, much better idea, especially given the residents behind us as well that are butters. Rather than looking at the back of a commercial space, having trailers, loud noises, we decided to go with the residential aspect with, you know, keeping a 100-foot buffer rather than a 50 for the residents behind us. No parking behind our building, no through traffic, no loud noises, and just thought overall it'd be a benefit for Summersworth as a whole to bring this, you know, bring this type of site to attention rather than more commercial, which you guys are very plentiful in the area. So we just thought overall it was a better switch to pivot towards the residential. I'm going to allow Mark Janowitz, our architect, to come up and speak a little bit more on the building and give some details. We did have a meeting this morning. We're following all the ordinance. We have enough parking for that. We're also going to be doing some artistic designs for the front of the building, making sure that this is an award-winning building that we're bringing to your city that you can be proud of and, you know, pass by with your, being happy with, so. Mark, if you wouldn't mind coming up and talking a little bit about the building, and obviously can answer some questions after.
Good evening. Let me lower that mic. Good evening, everyone. Mark Janowitz, I'm Principal of LYF Architects. We're based in Haverhill, Massachusetts, but we're doing commercial, residential, a lot of multifamily, and mixed-use developments really all throughout New England, New York to Maine. We're mainly working in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. We're doing a number of commercial, multifamily, and mixed-use projects with Dubay Engineering, who are based out of Salem, and are the civil engineer on this project. Carl Dubay wasn't, was at the TRC meeting this morning. I was not able to be there, but there was a good conversation and generally very positive feedback on all of the site plan development issues that would be required, you know, in terms of drainage and parking and fire department access, police, traffic study impending. We all know the type of requirements that will need to be reviewed and balanced with the concerns of the community. Walking through the site and I, do I just down arrow if I? This is a, you know, the existing condition, church property, similar there, and this is the concept rendering of the roof and a part, and, you know, kind of parking vehicular access, controlled accesses on both ends of High Street. You'll notice that, you know, there's very comfortable drive aisles, 24 feet between, and all parking spaces are full depth, 18 foot. So there's comfortable dimensions within the parking for vehicular traffic and, again, the fire department throughout it. We've created a courtyard in the entry of the H, which, and you'd have commercial, again, spaces facing High Street, and the central access would be kind of guest entrance to the residents, to the, and we'll look at the floor plan for that. And as Jake mentioned, you know, the back is really a landscape green zone. It's a buffer zone for the residential area and keeping, you know, that really a quiet zone. There may be walking trails, but no vehicular traffic around the rear of the building. Next plan is really another site plan showing the same information largely of access points, the driveways and so forth. This is a more detailed plan of, and again, this is very, still conceptual. We can balance out certain elements. We're presently showing three commercial spaces that face High Street as well as the courtyard. As Jake mentioned, you know, there may be a cafe, bistro, outdoor seating in one or even two of those. It lends itself to the left one, I feel, and better, and then it could be, you know, some other type of professional service, office, retail, other type of commercial. Then we start with the residential, some residential on that level. Other community space could be open meeting spaces, exercise, maybe tenant storage, other support services of amenities for the residents that can be shared as community meeting space as well. Then we have a rear courtyard, which is again more of a quiet zone than a very active, you know, we're not putting pickleball court out here or tennis courts. And then, you know, upper floors show again a mix of studio, one- and two-bedroom apartments that would all stack. And, you know, this is a kind of a balancing act. We're trying to show a number of different types of units, a mix of studios, ones and twos, to kind of get a good cross-section of the community and what their needs might be. And, you know, there is a fair amount of density, there's no question, and that, you know, often needed in a development like this that's supporting workforce housing, knowing that, you know, the market rate really has to be able to support the lower-rate workforce. And so it's, you know, truly an inclusionary type of project. Then, you know, we're working with just concepts of an angular, you know, it's, we consider this a contemporary New England kind of vernacular, which, you know, it's kind of more of a modern version of kind of farmhouse design, but just, you know, classic gable roofs and, you know, different kind of components that address the 21st century and, but still, you know, with some New England character to it. You know, these are early in development and conceptual. There'd be some balconies, some recess, some exterior, obviously a commercial zone that can engage the public and, you know, truly be kind of a welcoming type of building that with the other landscaped areas would be a nice destination for both the public who visit and the people who live there. So I'm pretty much with that. Open up for a discussion. We're looking for your feedback to help, you know, make this an attractive project for all.
All right, thank you. Ms. McNair, then, Mr. Rhodes.
Okay, first of all, yes to all of this. Absolutely. You have my vote. You have it. This is exactly the type of project that I personally want to see come in to Summersworth. I think we have so many great spaces that could house such a project, and this is one of those great spaces for that. I love, love, love that there is a workforce housing aspect to it, the community spaces aspect to it, and then the small bistro, this, well, like, you have a vision for what you want to do and what you want to see there with still, you know, maintaining, you said it in your own verbiage, you want something that is high-quality, and that's what we want. We want to see these elevated projects coming into Summersworth where the mixed-use model is so popular right now, and it makes so much sense for so many reasons, especially where space is a consideration. I know that there's going to be, you know, talk about all of this says conceptually, this is a yes, 100,000 percent, and I can think of five more spaces if you want to get to them. Absolutely yes for me. I love this, everything about it.
Mr. Rhodes?
I'm going to sound very similar. When the diocese announced that they were going to consolidate down and leave this space open for future development, I'm not sure entirely what I was hoping would come in. What I was hoping wouldn't come in was another strip mall, because this is the point where it starts transitioning on High Street from being much more commercial to much more residential space. When I say I wasn't quite sure what I was hoping would come in, I think if I'd thought a little bit more deeply, it would have been something very much like this. What you're proposing here is an excellent use of the site. It's a mixed-use property. It picks up that transitional element of the shift from commercial towards more residential space on High. I think the way you put it as a 21st century building that echoes back to the New England character is an excellent representation of what this looks like. You've got the peaked roofs. You have a project that despite looking very modern, still kind of fits in with that milltown feel that we have here, and I think we've done a very good job of capturing that. The fact that you've already started talking to neighboring residents about integrating the trail system speaks to what you're looking at here. The fact that you're proposing workforce housing, there's very few things that could make me happier. We've had a lot of large multifamily residential projects come in here. They're consistently market rate across the board. We are in a residential housing crisis. I don't think crisis is an overblown word for it. And the fact that you're proposing to have at least some of the units qualify as workforce is one of the best things I've heard in ages up here. Couple of possible concerns with the site, and it's not anything that's close to a deal breaker, just things that I'm hoping you'll address. Traffic, where this is currently a church. It's a Catholic church, so it's not just Sundays that they're holding masses or that there are other events going on, but conversion to residential is probably going to increase traffic fairly substantially. So it's already a bit of an issue on High Street. I'm sure there's ways you can address it.
Before doing that traffic survey.
Beautiful. Yeah. Awesome. Exactly what I was hoping to hear. Glad you're addressing it. In terms of the landscaping, the conceptual looks excellent. The only thing I'd point to is the city maintains a great list of natives and low irrigation plants or no irrigation plants. I'm sure you're going to be engaging with the landscape architect if you're not one as well. I'd just say cooperate with the city staff on that. They'll do a lot of the work for you. Could not be happier about this sort of project. I think it would be an excellent fit for the community, exactly the kind of thing I'd hope to see. So very enthusiastic. Thank you.
Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, I got a lot of stuff here. First off, love the project. Very, very neat idea. I guess, first things first is, you know, I've been staring at that church for a long time, you know, ever since they closed their doors, I say, geez, you know, what's going to go there, right? That's a perfect fit. And once to Mr. Rhodes' point, it's a beautiful transition from the dense commercial corridor to the residential part of town, right? So it's nice where you're blending both of those two. One thing that I really like about this is that it wasn't that long ago that we were talking about how many units need to be put into town for growth by, what is it, 2040? We need, what, 700?
740.
740, call it 750, right? So this will be the third major project that's tipping us very close to our target. Fourth, thank you. Yeah, so I mean, it's really getting us on our way. So this is a beautiful solution to that problem. You know, and I guess, this is a rare property, too. This is a big lot. This is a very, very big lot. We don't have very many big lots left, and I think it's a very appropriate use for that I like your renderings. I think they're beautiful. I love the idea of the brick or the stone down below and then maybe a board and baton. You know, it's, it's a good look. I think it's very modern, looks really nice. It is appropriate with our town. Couple notes on traffic, right? So Mr. Rhodes hit it a little bit. It's definitely going to be a lot higher flow than what's there right now. I know with the church, you get a lot of, I mean, 10, 15 minutes, you're going to get spurts, where with this, you're going to get regular in and out all day. Fortunately, you have the turn, you have the median lane in front that's helping you. I'm going to urge you to possibly reconsider your redesign on the southern side. I would suggest, because that light, if you've ever been down to that light, that left lane that turns into Walmart backs up.
We're open for all.
Good, I'm glad. I would strongly suggest that you make that an entrance only and prevent left turns at that spot.
Can we?
Excellent. Yeah, I would normally say put a traffic light in, but I would probably be voted down horribly for that. We just added another, or at least we just approved another traffic light not that much farther down the street, and that was not as received as well as we wanted to, but it's going in. Anywho, is your, is your site going to capture all of the proposed parking? I think right now it's, what, 1.3?
Yeah, we have 1.3. And we can modify it to, I mean, $1.30. We can, it can modify to, I mean, 1.3 dollars. Parking, I think it was just one?
One.
Yeah, and, okay, we, we still are, are wanting to balance, you know, subject to what the potential commercial uses are, those, each space will have their own requirements, and then, you know, we'd like to be above one, but, you know, how, how much, it'll be a balancing and then our final unit count versus how many studios, ones and two bedrooms, so, but, but we intend to, to make that work with, without any waivers.
Okay, good. Yeah, and I don't see any, any, you know, like drainage systems or ponds or anything built in, right, so you're, you're planning to go subterranean?
We, we hope to do it all just through infiltration, and, you know, if necessary, we would look at pervious.
Horse movement.
Pavement if, if needed, but, but hopefully we could do it all just through, you know, groundwater infiltration.
Okay, excellent. Let's see, I'm going to stress it, be very careful with your light design, I know we always say down lighting shielded, I can tell you, I live probably about a half mile, I guess, east of this site, and I, I have to look at the horizon, I see the, the light pollution of Walmart and Home Depot and Target and all that, and it's, it's, it's bad.
We've already discussed the ambient lighting for the parking lot for the building itself, so that's not radiating off, like, a lot of these commercial aspects have, you know, much more highly-generated light, but, I mean, you can probably speak on.
We'll have photometrics and, and have a lighting designer on it, and it'll, it'll be, no, there should be no light pollution off the site.
Yeah, I would love to go back to these, these big commercial sites and have them do the same thing, that would be very nice. Oh, well, maybe someday.
Put, put that in the, the storage container.
Geez, no doubt about it, we got our work cut out for us, guys.
There's nobody listening.
Yeah, and I guess the, the last bit, and then I'll, I'll give you, leave you guys in peace, the word of, the word of the year for me is synergy, right? I love the idea of the bistro, you know, and it's, you're working with the neighborhood, right? I love the idea of mixed-use, it's all about working together and having a nice community, it's something that's new to us. You know, that, that new property right down the street, the, the Press Development across from the Goodwill that's going to be going in here soon, is following the same mentality, so this is the second of its type here in the city, so I'm excited to see how that pans out when it's built, so.
Great.
Thank you for coming to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Witham?
Thank you. I won't reiterate all the compliments other than to say I agree. I am a member of that St. Ignatius Church community, our pastor has done an excellent job preparing the congregation for the eventual sale of this property. It is still used very slightly in occasional funeral, I think they still hold a 7:00 AM mass there on Sundays. I don't get up that early to go to church, I go at 11:00, so, but, you know, there's, there's been some discussion about how this could be a radical shift, it's the tearing down of a church, and that has sort of a visceral reaction by some, but I would say that that has been lessened significantly by the work of our pastor to prepare the congregation for this, and in fact, I think the congregation has been waiting with bated breath for what is going to go here, right? And there's been every thought of, of a supermarket to any number of other things that could go there, people just kind of throwing ideas out there, and I've been very mindful of what could eventually be there, much like Mr. Rhodes, because it is that transitional area, and very mindful of the very large residential cinnamon ridge development behind, and I think that the conceptual design that you've prepared here is very cognizant of that neighborhood being behind you, so this fits this lot, I think, rather well, so applaud to the, at least conceptual, design. Like Mr. Berry said, I think sight lighting is going to be important, you can have a terrific design, but if there's light pollution to that neighborhood, it's going to be a scar, so photometrics are going to be important, I might suggest lower light poles, I, I like what's, what you show conceptually here, I, I think it has a better feel to it than more of a commercial elevated fixture, so just throw that out as an observation and as a thought. Obviously, all the positives that we're sharing with you are, are subject to the details of drainage design and all of that, and I think one of the bigger is, is going to be traffic, so I do look forward to the traffic analysis that would be done here, and I appreciate the flexibility in terms of how we space entry-exit, whether we have left turns or entry-only, I think we're going to have to be kind of mindful of that because of the area that you're in along High Street, so I just applaud you there, and I look forward to those details being flushed out. The more northerly one, I like the fact that it is in line with the street across the street, that, that seems to make sense from my perspective, I'm not a traffic guy, but that makes sense, and, I don't know, maybe the southern one could align with that other road, which, I think that's Penny Lane, maybe, not sure.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe there's an option there to align that entry-exit with that street as well, just somehow that seems to work in my head, but, again, I lean on the traffic engineers for that. To that end, we talked about the Press Cafe, it's just kind of high-end, fast food, and they're going to have a unique element with pickleball courts and things of that nature, not too distant from where you are here on the other side of the road. They are putting in another signal, and one of the things that I think we need to be mindful of as a planning board is now this corridor aspect, right, and the, the sequencing of lights, we've, we've, we recently completed, recently, within the last year or two, it's called a CMAC grant here in New Hampshire, congestion mitigation air quality grant, it was a million-dollar upgrade to our signalization through the corridor, so they, they talk to each other, and we can control them from our Public Works Office and things of that nature, so I would encourage you to have a conversation with staff about maybe a contribution to our corridor in maintaining that traffic flow, I think it benefits you, it certainly benefits the rest of the community. I, I don't know what that would be, and I don't have a metric for how you would calculate that, so I can't offer that up now, but I, I think that's a, a reasonable participation here in the community. Sometimes I also like to leverage off-site improvements for recreation, but I think the fact that you're thinking about tying into a trail network, the courtyard space in the back being cognizant of the neighborhood, I think you're, you've moved me away from that thought, because I think that appeals to me here, I think you're, you're, you're mindful of that, so. I'll leave it at that, again, thank you for the forward-looking proposal here, I, I do like the design of the building, I think it's the right balance here of modern with a throwback to what the community is, I think it fits rather well.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, thank you for this, thanks for coming to Summersworth and helping us out with our housing needs and everything else, this is a good plan. One thing I liked, and it stands out right away to me, and you mentioned the roof line and all of that, that is wonderful, but the color scheme, whether you're planning on staying with the gray and the white, at least it breaks it up, so it doesn't look like one big box building, which is something that I really do not like at all, so whether you keep with that color scheme or go with something else, at least have that two-color separation there, so, so it, it breaks up the, you know, the, just the overall view, but the slope of the, of the roof lines and all of that, that's really a, a good thing to see. I personally would like you to stay with the 1.3 as opposed to one, where visitors going to go, when you have one, and, and you need room for visitors, because that's going to be a fact of reality, people will want to be coming there to visit their friends and all that kind of thing. I, I notice on, on this drawing here, which I'm looking at, in the back left-hand corner there, I'm assuming that's maybe for trash or something, and the same on the right-hand side, and I've been asking this a lot lately, and I'm going to ask, are you also going to be allowing them to have some recyclable capabilities of, instead of everything going in the trash?
Definitely, definitely.
Because we don't see a lot, in what we have now, we don't see a lot of recycling opportunities for people, and I think in a building on this size that you should be, because it's not only going to make them happy, it's, it's going to make a lot of other people happy, too, that, that this stuff isn't going into the landfill somewhere and when it can, when there's perfectly good uses of recyclable materials, so I'm, I'm very glad for that answer. The little, whatever, it's a, it's a gazebo or whatever it is there in the back courtyard, I'm just curious if you're, what the purpose of that is, and if you're going to have some opportunity for people to have cookout, bar, barbecue or whatever area there.
That was kind of our idea, to have somewhat like a cooking workspace or park benches to be able to, you know, mingle back there. Obviously, we didn't, couldn't do pickleball or something like that because of the noises complaints going over the residential, but yeah, that's kind of the idea back there, and for the trash, we're hoping to have a management system, internal compactor along with recycling done by a management system.
Very good, very good, that, that's, that's the optimal, so, thank you. It's my industry, so that's why I'm asking about it, and, and especially if you're using compactors, you're ahead of the game, so thanks a lot.
Absolutely.
I have a question, the demolition portion of it, is that done in concert with the diocese?
It's part of our agreement to demolish the site.
Okay.
Yep.
So they will take care of all the, any artifacts that?
Yeah, so.
Proper disposition of any?
Yeah, we're talking, I think there might be some monuments on, on the site as well that we would keep, I'm, I'm talking about keeping them on the property, but we'd be demol, that, they put in the agreement to demolish the site, make sure, you know, any hazardous material is taken care of, et cetera.
And of course, yeah, they would salvage whatever.
Whatever artifacts.
Whatever artifacts, and, and they would always have their selective demolition and, and to salvage anything of value.
Yep.
That, that they choose, prior to the.
Right to the full demolition.
We would do, yeah, walk through that.
Right. Mr. Horton?
Yeah, I'd echo a lot of the comments that were already made here tonight, but a couple of things, I like the balance that you've shown between commercial and the residential. I commend you for, you know, having the rear setback, the rear of the facility, all residential and kind of that quiet area like you talked about, I like, I like the design layout where that you do have those courtyards and those kind of, those areas that break it up. Also, I like the roof lines, the different roof lines that you've projected, and I, I agree with the rest of the board, I think it's going to be a great asset and a great addition to the community, so, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Splain?
This will be only rent apartments, not exclusively just to rent, right? Okay. Another, I would have some suggestions, more, since like the main entrance of the building or the site will be here, my suggestion will be to position most of the parking on this side, on north side, and to have the commercial spaces one side, and then the tenants or anything else on the other side, since, as you said, you want to create some kind of paths to connect with the Walmart, so to have more exclusive space. Other than that, it's just a great project. My suggestion will be to have more, not as dark, the, for the facade, since we don't have this, I mean, this will be a big massive building, so having something like as dark as this, but more open colors. Other than that, this is a great project, a great addition for the, the city. Less parking I would love instead, but, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the board, Mr. Wodzinski, any input, Mr. Witham?
Yeah, just a, maybe it's a final comment here unless there are others, I, I, we say this every now and again, I just want to reiterate here, because I think it's really meaningful here, I think these conceptual reviews are extremely helpful for us and, I think extremely helpful for the applicant. I have tend to, I, I've found that they streamline the formal process a whole lot more, because a lot of these nitty-gritty concerns have been flushed out already, so, again, I appreciate that you're already working with the neighborhood, appreciate that you're working with city staff, so combine this conceptual review with SRTC and the other work, should make the formal approval process a whole lot smoother, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, speaking for the development team, this is very helpful for us, there's a lot of work, a lot of the engineering expenses, architectural work, that goes into this next phase, so getting your feedback and knowing we're on the right track gives a lot of, a lot of confidence for us to spend that money, do the proper engineering, make sure we're in compliance, you know, put all the hours in with, with staff, and this is, this type of development, you know, mixed-use, really is a community-building project, I think, and, and it really calls for, you know, close collaboration with the city to, to align with the master plan as best as possible and, and really just kind of go forward smoothly, and I think it's a win-win, you know, when, when we approach projects that way, and, and my firm takes pride in, in really kind of doing community-building projects like that, so, really looking forward to the next phase, and I think we have the confidence of moving forward to, to really do all the proper engineering and, and, and let it go, you know, forward in a smooth way.
Out of curiosity, when, like, the demolition or anything like that will start, is there like a timeframe for the project?
Depends how fast you approve it.
Oh, okay.
2026, how about that?
The goal.
And we, we, we recognize you have to go through zoning.
Of course, yep, and the variance, yep.
Any other questions on the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all so much, really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Dr. Mears, any new business that may, may come before the board?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Any workshop business?
Yes, we had a meeting last week with some of the planning board members, a workshop meeting to go over the site plan, regulation updates, I would like to put that forward for a public hearing for December, if that's okay, I think it was a good meeting, so thank you to those who attended. So, that would be up to the planning board if they want to move forward.
entertain a motion to put that to public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Berry, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Communications and miscellaneous. Mr. Horton?
Just a quick follow-up question from your report, Council Witham, I'm just kind of curious on the Main Street water main, if we're going to pick up any of those older side streets, Fayette in particular with the 100-year-old water mains, I'm just kind of curious the scope there.
I, I don't have the details of that, but I do know that the project that we just did on Lower Main Street, that the engineering and actual construction did stub and valve appropriately, so that in the future, we don't have to dig into the main roadway, if maybe that's where you were going. And just as I speak about that Lower Main Street project, a few people have questioned me, I thought we were going to pave that road, we are, that'll be done in the springtime, there was an engineering decision made to allow the trenches to settle over the winter so that we have a better product when we pave in the spring.
We have a happy Thanksgiving card from Mr. Splain, happy Thanksgiving team, great being on the planning board with you all, as you celebrate the special season of gratitude, make traditions both old and new, create wonderful memories and add to the happiness of Thanksgiving, John Splain.
Aw, nice.
Mr. Berry?
And that's on the record. Actually, to go back to the whole Fayette Street conversation, so we know that we've, we spoke about maybe making that a one-way street, has there been any development from the city council perspective, whether that could possibly pan out?
No, it's percolated a little bit in committee, but no formal decisions yet, so, nothing to report.
Got it, so, yeah, so I guess the, I don't, I'm not sure when that's going to happen, you said 26, yes?
I don't know when that's going to happen, I think part of it would be dependent upon the construction of the new building, which is.
Exactly, yeah, so obviously we don't want to rush into that, if there's any potential layout changes, right? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Mr. McNeil?
Speaking of traffic, so, we're, we're kind of revisiting the High Street corridor where all of those traffic lights currently exist, and now we're putting in another 100-plus apartments potentially with their visitors and the businesses that are going to also take that up, and I know they're making, or taking all of that into consideration, but as, and, and this is, this is like a question for. as, and this is, this is like a question for what the process is. With there already being so many lights, there's the Walmart light, there's the one at Target or the next one, and then now we're putting in a third one potentially for press. Is there a way to reduce those lights? Like, take out the one between Target and Walmart? Or, like, is there a way that we can end up, instead of four lights being there, three? Like, where do we have that conversation?
You can make a roundabout.
Yes.
So I think I can.
I always want a roundabout.
As more development projects come along High Street, I think the planning board should consider taking an off-site improvement for a corridor study to look at the whole entire corridor. Dave has talked about this, and we've talked internally as staff. When press comes in for any kind of street, or streetlight acceptance, that is going to be a recommendation of staff that they put in contribution to a corridor study. So as Walmart redevelops or Target, that should be something that's discussed.
Yeah, I know Walmart's doing their project or trying to get their project to move forward for their reconfiguring the parking lot. We talked about that real recently. And with all that development going on, I think it, I think anybody who's doing any development in that area should be contributing to that study.
Yes.
Is there any, anything new on the muffler shop and the Walmart pod as far as the landscaping?
I will follow up on that. I'll follow up on that.
There was a report recently to council that they are moving forward with compliance because they have been cited by the city. I think some of it was put off until the spring because of just the conditions to plant right now are not favorable. So that is also true. I know in the report that we got of the, it's an auto parts store next to the Continental buffet. They have been cited as well, and their planting schedule is the spring also. So there are several that are being worked on.
Dr. Mears?
I just have three items. The November 14th Community Forum at the Career Technical Center was well-attended. We probably had around 45 attendees. And one of the civics teachers made it a requirement for students to attend. So that was kind of nice. So thank you to those that came. I think that's going to be good information for the master plan. And thank you to staff. Anna did a lot of work on preparing for that event. And Stratford Regional Planning Commission and Dana Crossley on having a successful event. Thank you to the city manager and the department heads for the Capitol Improvements presentation tonight. There's a lot of recreation that was added and planning projects moving forward. So we appreciate that. And Anna and Dana took this on as a special project. So we appreciate all the work that they did. They worked on the PowerPoint presentation and the document and had meetings with all the department heads, which was really good. And then the last item was storage containers. We will not have any kind of rewrite of language, but I think staff needs to research on what other communities are doing for this and bring some kind of recommendation and to be able to tailor this to the city of Somersworth. I don't know if it's like a square footage requirement or putting a timeline on this, but we will, we'll do some additional research for the next meeting to start the discussion.
Good. Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, I almost forgot this. The, on Blackwater Road where the auto sales, they're four-foot tall. Probably everybody's noticed that they're four-foot tall pine trees or evergreens there just died within a couple of weeks. And there's at least eight of them there. And they're as brown as brown could be. So they need to replace those with something that's going to live. Yes, at the auction site. And I'm thinking of the neighbor across the street, and that was a big concern for them, so.
Mr. Splain.
Do you want to answer that, Jim?
Sure, it's a piece I can jump on with that. Conservation Commission has been working probably for about a year at this point on improvements at Malley Farm. And U.S. Fish and Wildlife has engaged on that project. So we're expecting an update on that, probably within the next few months. It may have been delayed slightly by the government shutdown. But that is potentially coming there.
We have Willam Pond, you know, something like that.
Yep. Yep, there's Willam Pond. There's also Mass Point, which opened 10-ish years ago, I believe. And then Malley Farm would be potentially in the next few years as well.
Right behind my house is the extended of the, what do you call, like the whole forest? And it's a shame because it's not accessible. And if something like Willam Pond is extended through trails, that would be amazing. Because you cannot have access, even though you have your property and you cannot walk, you know, you can do anything. It's a shame.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of different sites that are in conservation in the city. One on Lily Pond is not open for that kind of activity, but I think Malley is probably the best source in the city for that right now. We've got a situation where it's very difficult to interconnect these sorts of things because there's so much private ownership that's broken it up in pieces that are in conservation that are specifically bounded off from access and tended to keep them as wildland. I'm hopeful that we can do something with access on Malley Farm that allows it to stay in conservation but also have public access.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy, for that. The, with Malley Farm, I mean, on the All Trails website, it talks about the, how the trails there are connected to the Scoutland Trails in Rollinsford. I've been trying to find that connection between that trail for a number of times. Coming from Rollinsford, trying to find it out there. Is there going to be a connection to Rollinsford? Because that's, you know, that just expands the site tremendously to be able to do that.
So the Conservation Commission folks that have been working directly on that project have been trying to find that same connection with about the same results that you've had, I think. In terms of interconnecting for it, trail design would be forthcoming on that. Part of the process there is getting U.S. Fish and Wildlife appraisal to basically hold the site. And trail design would come following that point. I would hope that that would be a chunk of it, and it's a piece that we've talked about as well.
Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, second by Mr. Berry. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose. Thank you very much.